Meeting of the Town Pleasant Valley Zoning Board of Appeals for July 2nd, 2025. If you would stand to salute the flag.
Let's lead it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The item that we have on the agenda for tonight was adjourned from the June 25th meeting. It's appeal number 1081, Bob McRitchie, 366 Creek Road, who would like to erect a 24 by 24 workshop in front of the face of his residence, which is against Pleasant Valley zoning code. It will also need a variance of 55 feet from the property line. That's from the garage to the property line. I think that we closed the public hearings, so all we need to do is deliberations, right? We had a number of questions. The one big question that we had was, geez, is that how to determine exactly where the lot line started if we don't really know where it was? Now, we do have from Mr. Baxter that the town has a right-of-way of 10 feet from the edge of the road. Mr. McRitchie has 15 feet from the edge of the road. He is five feet from the right-of-way, which would, he would need a 55-foot variance. Does everyone agree with that?
Yep.
Yes, I agree with that.
Is that right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. The standards for, oh, we had adjourned this also so that we could apply and get more opinions on the standards for determining the front lot line and where it should be and where it is. The house was built, and you said 1962? 1962, way before zoning started in like 74. Does anyone want to start with deliberations? I did look at, Kathy, didn't you send out the 98, 2.2, number five, the front yard setback is from the property line? And then if the property line is the road center line, it, the setback is from the assumed property edge, which would be...
Right, whatever was written in the code.
It was back, way in the back in the book requirements?
Yes.
And you found that? I've never seen that one before.
Okay. Yeah, the setback is always from the property line, is what the code states.
Right, except though we didn't know where the property line was? That was the whole question, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Yes, Mary. Mary's gonna read into the record the correspondence that we've had from Mr. Lambert and, go ahead, and Mr. Baxter, right?
Okay, this is from John Baxter, Thursday, June 26th, 2025, 9:53 a.m., to the building inspector with CCs to Pleasant Valley zoning, Courtney Corchane? No?
Chrisanne Simone.
Chrisanne Simone and PB Mayor 12 at Gmail. Subject 366 Creek Road. Good morning. Mr. McRitchie reached out to me this morning about the setback from the road for his new building and pad. The footprint of the new building and pad are well outside the highway department's right-of-way. The building will have no impact on Creek Road on site distance in either direction. It's no removal, drainage, or road maintenance. If you have any questions, please contact my office. Best regards, John Baxter, Highway Supervisor, Town of Pleasant Valley. The second one is from John Baxter, sent on Monday, June 30th, 2025, at 7:05 a.m., to the building inspector, the highway clerk, Courtney...
Corchane.
Corchane, Chrisanne Simone, Pleasant Valley zoning, regarding 366 Creek Road. Good morning. Creek Road is a user road. My right-of-way for road maintenance is 10 feet from the edge of the road. Best regards, John Baxter, Highway Supervisor, Town of Pleasant Valley. The final is from Pleasant Valley zoning, sent on Monday, June 30th, at 20, 2025, at 11:34 a.m., to Elizabeth Bamba and FER 77308. CC, John, basically CCing the board, and Chrisanne, Simone, John Baxter, building inspector. 366 Creek Road area variance. Betty, we just found out from John Baxter, the offset from the edge of the road is in fact 10 feet. That being said, Mr. McRitchie's garage is approximately 15 feet from the road edge. In theory, Mr. McRitchie would be looking for a 55-foot relief, LDR and zoning, 60 front, 60-foot front setback for a variance. Mr. McRitchie's home was built in 1965 prior to zoning and lies right up against a hill in the back, as would the new garage. I currently don't have a problem with this relief, with this relief needed to build the garage. Thank you, James P. Lambert, zoning administrator, 1554 Main Street, Pleasant Valley, New York.
Okay, do you want to do the balancing test? Maybe? Okay, question number one. Will there be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties if the variance is granted? I say no, it's not likely. The parcel is unique in that it is not only non-conforming, it is abutting a rock wall. Anything on that parcel would require a variance. The applicant testified there would be no commercial activity, only for personal use. He is retired now. Anyone else? What do you say, John? I have to go and order a hub on here, so I don't have to hunt for them. Steve?
Nope.
Kathy?
No, given the testimony that was just read into the record...
Robert?
No.
Mary?
No, between the testimony and the placement of the house on the hill, that's, I think it'll be fine.
Okay. Question number two. Can the benefit sought be achieved by any other feasible method which would not require an area variance or a lesser area variance? Mr. Dunn?
No, not for the size of the building.
Steve?
No.
Kathy?
No, I don't see any.
Really should change these to where people sit. Robert?
No.
Mary?
No.
Then I say no. Is the requested area variance substantial? Yes. Of course it is. I mean, it's, not only is it substantial, it's 100% to put the garage in front of the front lawn of the house. It's another 55 feet for the garage. However, the lot is non-conforming, the house is not conforming, the rock wall, it's at least 800 or 900 feet to the left to the first neighbor, so I don't see a problem with it. Mr. Dunn?
No problem, except if I may, do we not need a variance? Do we not need a variance for the building being in front of the home as well as a variance?
Yes, he needs two.
He needs two variances, right.
The garage in front of...
Are we doing each one separately?
Yes.
We're doing a balancing test. What are we, for each variance?
Would you like to do them separately?
You only have one application.
Yeah, but there are two variances, so I...
You're right.
I can number them. You want to go through them again?
No.
No, I mean, if we're doing them as, you know, if it's encompassing both, then that's fine.
They all look like the same answers, huh?
The same what?
The same answers.
It is the same answers, I think, but... All right, so, Mr. Dunn, you were a yes. Steve?
Yes, yeah.
Yes. Kathy, you said yes, right?
I'm sorry, which question are we...
Is the requested area variance substantial?
Yes, both are definitely substantial.
Robert?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Spitzer's absent and Rhonda's absent. All right, so we already said it was built prior to zoning. Question number four. Will the proposed area variance, if granted, have any adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? I think most properties have garages included in their parcel and have not had any adverse impact, so I see any reason why we would expect this to... The neighbor to the left is 800 or more feet away, making the impact on the neighborhood even less noticeable.
It's a workshop.
Right, okay. Will it have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? I say no. Mr. Dunn?
No, I say no also.
All righty, Kathy?
No, and again, I'm gonna refer back to, you know, Mr. Baxter's comments that said that it's not gonna have any adverse effect.
Robert?
No.
No. Mary?
No, based on what Mr. Baxter said in his June 26th.
Okay. I'm gonna put a comment on the end to see notes from, because they'll be included in the record, right? Last question is, is the alleged difficulty self-created?
Yes.
Yeah, that's an obvious yes. Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Dunn? You know, I sit at this table and my mouth goes dry. Steve?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes, I believe it's self-created.
Mr. Mouser?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes. Oh, I don't have to answer.
Why don't you?
Because you already wrote the answer before I said it.
Okay, without the variance, the applicant, the applicant would be denied the use of a garage or a workshop. And this pack includes record responses from Patrick Lampert, code enforcer, and John Baxter, highway superintendent. Are you ready to vote? I did write on the resolution two variances. Okay, you want me to read the resolution? What?
Do you have to write on that that voting compasses both resolutions on that?
I just did, but...
Oh, okay. I didn't, I can't, I can't read that.
Okay. An area variance results in a modification of physical restrictions so that an allowable use may be established on the property. For example, yard requirements, setback lines, lot coverage, frontage requirements, or destiny, density regulations, so that the property may be utilized for one of the uses permitted by the zoning ordinance. Whereas the applicant, Robert McRitchie, has submitted proof in support of his application for two area variances, which under the code of the Town of Pleasant Valley requires the issuance of variances. And whereas such proof has been duly considered by the board at a public meeting, and whereas an area variance is a request for relief from dimensional standards contained in the zoning ordinance, and it requires a demonstration of practical difficulty. And whereas, relief may be granted if the applicant can demonstrate that strict compliance with the zoning would cause practical difficulty. Whereas in making a determination, the board shall balance the benefit to the applicant with the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, the balancing test is attached. Now therefore be it resolved that the board finds that the following special circumstances or conditions exist which apply to the applicant's land, but do not apply generally to the land of buildings in the neighborhood. And be it further resolved that the board finds the above circumstances or conditions are such that strict application of the provisions of Chapter 98 of the Code of Town of Pleasant Valley results in practical difficulty and would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of his land building. And be it further resolved that for the reasons set forth above, the board determines that granting of the variances is necessary for the reasonable, I'm gonna put this here, for the reasonable use of the applicant's land, so that the variance is granted is the minimum variance that will accomplish the proposed use. And be it further resolved that the board finds the above circumstances or conditions are such that strict application of the provisions of Chapter 98 of the Code of Test Pleasant Valley results in practical difficulty and would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of her land. And be it further resolved that the board determines that the granting of the variances would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning chapter of the Code of Town of Pleasant Valley and will not be interest to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Want to do a roll call or all in favor?
I like a discussion.
All right, you want, I thought we just...
No, I'm...
All right.
I'm sorry, just to be a stickler, I, I think we should mention that the setback, the variance for the house to the front of the workshop is 13 feet. So we're giving them a 13-foot variance and a 55-foot variance.
Oh, okay.
I mean, not to be a pain, but if you don't dot all the i's and cross all the t's, you know it'll come back to haunt you.
It resolved. The variance for the garage to the house is in front, 13 feet?
13 feet.
13 feet. The garage is 55 feet from the right-of-way, right?
Yes.
Well, the garage isn't 50, the garage is five foot from the right-of-way, giving him a 50-foot, 55-foot variance.
Oh, the variance, yeah. Okay, is that it? Anybody else have anything? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Woo-hoo, it's done.
Bet you feel better now.
Well, we're sorry you had to come out, but we have to do it right.
Have a great one.
I did, no, sorry. Okay, does anybody have anything else they want to... No. You want to talk about it on the...
I'd like to talk about it off the record. I don't know if that's legal since we have a board here.
They're shaking their head no over there.
I can hear you, but I know you're not supposed to be talking quietly and regardless.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone have anything else? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Over.
Second? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Never got an opposition for that one.
Yeah, never do.
Never do. Never do.